Well, greetings, my fellow board members. I hope you all at least got to enjoy today. We had beautiful weather and actually, from what I hear, it is only going to get better.
For tomorrow, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, it's only going to get better. So hopefully, everybody's getting a chance to finally enjoy something about this year, which has been a hard one. Why don't we look at the minutes? Has everybody received the minutes? And the minutes are on onboard. So if you guys are onboard, you can actually see the minutes. They're there. Does everybody want to take a second to look at them so we can approve them? Any comments? Okay. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from February, from our February trustee meeting.
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We will now go to our regular business. So we're going to start with a short report from Francis, who I think sent us all his report, or was that last month?
Last month.
Okay. I think it's great, Francis, if you could send it to ahead of time. So when you get to it, you can just do highlights. But in the meantime, Francis, the floor is yours.
Okay. How is that? I can't see my beautiful face in there. I try to.
We have to make you a co-host.
Okay, whatever that means, yeah, right.
Once you're a co-host, you can activate your video, Francis.
You cannot.
No, you should try now. Try it now. There you are.
There you are.
All right, okay. All right. Now, Deidra, you said I should try to send my report ahead of time?
If you can, that way you can just give us the highlights. If you can't, you can't. But if you can, you can just give us the highlights.
Do I take too long, perhaps? I don't know. I can always make it short.
Do what you can do.
Okay, all right. Now, I have a number of issues that I wanted to raise. Now, many of the information that I could bring to your attention are really contained in the executive director's report, which I circulated, I think, two weeks ago.
I thought so.
And that is comprehensive enough. If you read that, if you have a moment, look at that. And many of the issues are discussed, and I'm not going to repeat that here. There's four or five things that I want to bring to your attention very, very quickly. One is that we had our meeting two weeks ago. The board had a meeting two weeks ago. And then many of the issues discussed were really organizational, this being the beginning of the year. So we discussed how the board should operate, some of the issues that relate to our work efficiency and effectiveness, et cetera. The first one on the agenda, and this is really more for your information, is the board felt that since one of the most important items on our agenda every month we meet is the review of the financial statement of the organization. The board is of the opinion that this is something that must be clearly scrutinized, and every board member must be sure, must make sure that they understand the financial statement and what they're approving. And so as a result, it was requested that more information is required on how to review the monthly financial statement provided by the regular, to do to the board every month in order to gain a better understanding of the financial conditions of the entire organization. And for that purpose, three seminars, training seminars are going to be organized for the board. One this month on balance sheet, and the next one, next month on the income statement, and then other, in May, there'll be other issues on the report and year-end projections, et cetera. So that's one. Two is that when we were discussing the recent IT report, particularly the fee structure discussions and the current budget planning, the issue of depreciation came up. It was discussed a lot in the budget committee. And so the board would like to make sure that they understand clearly what policy is being followed by WLS with regards to asset depreciation. Of course, you know, the asset depreciation refers to the declining value of an asset over a period of time due to use. So we would like to make sure that all the assets that WLS has in the last five years, from 2016 to 2021, that is, you know, phone system, security system, equipment, etc., and that this depreciated properly, including the obsolescence. I mean, an equipment may not, may still have value, but it could be obsolete because of advances in technology, et cetera. How do you deal with that? So the financial officer has been requested to provide a clear information to the board on that, and we'll be discussing it at our next, at our next meeting. So depreciation is something that the board is quite concerned about. Another issue is the question of the code of ethics. I think I reported that last time we met. Namely, we want to make sure that anyone who is appointed to the board as a board of trustees does not have any conflict of interest at all. And it is incumbent on any of these trustees or employee, whether he's paid or unpaid, to disqualify and recuse himself immediately whenever there's an appearance of conflict of interest. And that service on the board by any member does not, in itself, constitute an appearance of a conflict of interest. For example, I'm sitting on this board. I'm not a member of the board, but I'm an ex-official member. So there's no conflict of interest here. But if I was probably working for the New Rochelle Library, and I'm at the same time a trustee, then, you know, you can see a conflict of interest. So you can see how concerned our board is about being proper in this regard. And so the bylaw has been revised accordingly to make sure that this issue, this problem doesn't arise anymore. Another thing is the emergency health, new health emergency plan policies. We understand that in July of last year, the New York State Legislature passed a bill which requires employers to draft and publish contingency plan in the event of a declared public health emergency involving communicable diseases like a pandemic. If we have an emergency like we have now with the virus pandemic, how do we deal with it? When staff members are forced to work from home, for example, how do you supervise them? How long can they work at home? And what equipment they can take, et cetera? There should be a proper plan dealing with this kind of a situation if it arises again. And so our governance committee is working on that. A draft has been prepared, and we are going to be discussing that. And as soon as the draft is approved or is a body of approval, I'd like to share it with you as well. The next issue is the question of the free access, free direct access plan. I understand that the New York State requires that the library, myself, a plan about how it provides services to the patrons within its own area. The current plan, which WSS, WLS, you can find that on the website, the board would like to see that plan revised and then updated in the light of our experience with COVID, et cetera. This plan is being, is going to be discussed by the board, I think, next month. And then it's going to be shared, the draft is going to be shared with the library directors, who will discuss it. And whenever they approve that, then they'll come back to the board and then ready to go on that. The details of the order plan still to come out. And as soon as I get that, I'll probably share it with you as well. The last thing I want to say is, at the beginning of the year, the board is now trying to look ahead as to what is the future of WLS going forward, immediate future for the next two, three, four years. What should be our goals? What strategies we should adopt to get there? And how to adapt to the changing conditions, for example, created by advances in technology and COVID, et cetera. So in other words, we should begin to think forward how we're going to move this organization in the next few years. So a subcommittee has been, a committee has been created to deal with these issues, the strategy committee, which will meet for the first time next Monday. And three days ago, the president called me up and asked me to chair that meeting. So I'll be chairing that committee. It should be an exciting one, and whatever ideas come up, I'll be glad to share it with you. I think that's all I have.
Congratulations, Francis.
That's all I'll be, I have now to share with you. Thank you so much.
I just have one question. You said that they, you said that there was a conflict, the board members, there was a conflict of interest. What was the, what was the?
There was a situation where a board member from, oh, okay, it doesn't matter what district it was. But this particular candidate was employed as a deputy director in the, in the library concerned. As library A, I'm not mentioning the name, but library A. And at the same time, he was nominated as a trustee representing. So the issue came up. He said, okay, now, how can you be an employee of a member library and at the same time you are a trustee overlooking the operation of libraries? It looks like, you know, it doesn't look right, optical. So after a long discussion, that fellow had to withdraw.
Was that the, Francis, I'm sorry, was the conflict of interest in the same library? So it was an employee who also served on the board?
Yeah, he was, he was an employee of a library.
But not the, not the library where he served as a board member?
No, he was not a board member, yeah.
Oh, it was, it was, he was employed at one library and a board member at another library?
Yeah, that's right.
Understood.
And then, and then he was being nominated as a trustee. And at the same time, he was in the process of moving to somewhere. It was a complicated situation. So he did not, he did not look cautious at all. And we said, no, you cannot be a trustee at the same time, serve a particular interest of a library. But anyway, it was necessary that we had to be very straight on that and set the record straight.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I actually think if somebody could get Daniel co-hosting, I don't seem to be able to.
Me neither. I think, yeah, I'm not sure. I can't either. The host, there's a host. Is that you, Tom?
Yeah, Tom, could you give him?
I just did it.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. It's interesting, as WLS goes through kind of the look towards the future, you know, the New Rochelle Library is doing that as well. So it'll be interesting to be doing that at the same time and see if there's any synergies that can happen.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. I don't have, it's the president's report. I don't have much to report, other than to say that as the vaccines become more regular, I know that actually Tom and I talked about whether library staff will be able to get the vaccination. But it looks like, starting May 1st, everybody should be able to get it. So I'm looking forward to that having an impact, at least on when we can open. And if, I know libraries around the county are not, the vast majority are not open. But I'm hoping as the vaccines become more regular, and particularly if we have a chance to get our staff vaccinated, if they want to, that that will mean some change in status to when we can open. And which would also mean that at some point, I know we've become very comfortable having these meetings from our living rooms and kitchens and offices at home. But at some point, my fellow colleagues, we are going to have to see each other again face to face. And I think that time.
You can't wait. I am ready.
Yeah, me too.
Right.
If I have one more time of fumbling to find the Zoom details, it's one time too many.
All right. So I don't have much to add. Again, I'm anxious about our building. I'm going to say this every time. I'm anxious about our building. I'm anxious about how it is, it needs a lot of work. I'm anxious about how we're going to afford to do all that work. So I know we have plans on our way to address some of this, but I want to keep that in front of us. I don't want to get behind it. I don't want us to be in a building falling down, and we can't do anything. So that's all I have. Tom, let's go to the director's report.
Thank you, Deidra. And actually, I have some really positive news relative to the status of employees receiving vaccinations. It's really a great story. Essentially, one of our staff members, a part-time person, in the previous month qualified for vaccination, was able to make an appointment at a medical practice in the Bronx on Westchester Avenue. And she connected with the person administering the vaccination, who turned out to be a New Rochelle resident and a lover of the library and a consumer of our programs and our curbside. And so that was really a great, great news. But earlier this week, the governor changed a number of things relating to access to the vaccination. And one new change was that government employees are now eligible to receive a vaccination by their very status, particularly people who face the public. On that same day, I received an email from that woman, who was part of this practice in the Bronx, and said, "We would love to coordinate vaccinating all your staff that want on a vaccination." It was really something. So I went around, I solicited staff, our department heads did. And so a few have had their vaccinations, but tomorrow is the day. And we may see upwards of 20 staff members receive the Moderna vaccination. So that's really.
Oh, that's great, Tom.
Quite amazing, isn't it?
That's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Well done.
So our staff is, you know, once they receive that second, that second vaccination, it's, I think it's about almost four weeks away. I received mine coincidentally on Friday. So, so we should be in really good shape in a not-too-distant future. Everybody that wanted a vaccination was given the chance. And I think they're taking advantage of that. And of course, as Deidra said, we are, we are looking at COVID numbers in terms of New Rochelle, which is second highest in the county. It is going down. It's going down generally. Our peer libraries, peer libraries of our size and population have not reopened. But I have to be totally honest. Rye opened last Saturday, limited. Helam this Monday, limited. Scarsdale the 15th, limited. Harrison on the 22nd. So, you know, we're going forward, and we have to start thinking about making ourselves open. The only caveat that I just have to say is, as you folks know, we've used our time while we were closed to good, to really good use, where we have been working on upgrading our second floor. We're actually about to start adding carpet in children's and all the second floor, starting not next week, but the week after. We really need to get that done before we can open. And we're starting to add the new furniture, the new equipment as part of our, you know, our many grant programs, specific really most to the second floor renovation, which is exciting. And we, we're a little messy because we've been weeding like mad. We've been shifting. It's really given us a chance to kind of clean house and to organize ourselves and present ourselves better. So I feel good that we're in a better place. And I will continue to talk to Deidra and the board and look at numbers and monitor what my, what our colleagues are doing in terms of, you know, that limited reopening. So, so we're heading in that direction. And just in terms of, you know, library activity, as you folks know, we have been very active while we've been closed. Our curbside has been very busy. Last month, we saw over 653 trans, curbside transactions, which is great. We're doing quite a lot of programs. You know, we've had, previous month, we had 33 programs in children's with, you know, with attendance, where is that number, of almost 1,700. We're doing good teen programs, too, smaller in number and smaller in attendance. We're not doing a lot of adult programs at this point in time. But nonetheless, you know, we are, we are busy. Our social media, both Twitter, both of our Twitter accounts, you know, we're seeing lots of activity there. Our Instagram is seeing, you know, we're posting images. We're getting more followers and impressions. Our Facebook, we posted 65 times. For example, in the month of February, over 2,000 likes. We reached over 21,000 folks, engagements, almost 2,000. So, so social media has been very active. Our staff, particularly Nikki Fudge, has been very successful. Google activity, almost 52,000 people found us last month. We're getting phone calls, many visits to the website. Nikki and our staff are putting together really successful e-blasts, you know, week after week, on a variety of topics that relate to children and families and adults, and topical, et cetera. And, you know, our children's programs in particular are successful. We have a bilingual program with Maria. We're doing music and movement, storytime, family storytime, baby rhyme time, preschool storytime. So that's all working out. In terms of our outreach to adults, we still have our job coach, who works for us on a contract basis. Last month, she broadcast nine hours. She had 10 sessions with people, people looking for jobs or looking, seeking direction, looking for help with resumes, you know, network strategies, helping to come up with job retention strategies. You know, it's a cross-mix of women and men of different ages, anywhere from 20s into the 60s. So it's, so, you know, we're still active in that way, too. I mentioned that our second floor renovation project is moving ahead. You know, we finished painting on the second floor. It looks great. We're ready to put carpet down, which will be an effort, but will look wonderful. We've ordered furniture through Phase 1 and equipment. We're starting to circle around towards ordering appropriate furniture, shelving and equipment for Phase 2. We're nearly done with our gateway circulation desk project. If you folks have heard, we have a new entrance entering to the library proper from the lobby. Dale Zoytlin worked with us and with a local vendor who does canopies over entrances. It looks gorgeous. And we're nearly done closing that project out, also with our boiler project at HCL. We had contracted for a grant just recently through the state to replace the stairwell, the horrible, rickety, unsafe stairwell between the first floor and the lower level. And that is nearly complete. The new stairs are in, they look great, and they're safe. We just have to kind of finish that up, too, as well. Let's see what else is happening. There's a lot. So I'm happy to say.
Tom, where did you say those new stairs were?
You know, Deidra, in, at the Huguenot Children's Library, there is, there is a stairwell behind the circulation desk that's mostly used by staff that goes from that floor to the lower level. And I don't know if you've ever used it, but it was, it was in horrible shape and pitched, you know, pitched poorly and dark and rickety. And we have this gorgeous new staircase built by sort of a local Westchester contractor who specializes in that. And the staff is really thrilled. And we're going to paint the walls and provide better lighting. And it's, 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 it's really nice. It's, you know, and again, it's state, it's state grant money, which I'm proud to report, we have received more than double any other library in the county in the last 15 years. And it's great. We're continuing to use that grant money to, to improve our physical plant. But there are other things that are happening, too. And I'm just sort of looking at a grant that Francis is familiar with. The library was awarded $600 from the Rotary Club of New Rochelle. We decided to purchase books that relate to citizenship, volunteerism, and community connections. And so we purchased 43 books, seven in teens, 17 in adult, and the remaining 19 titles in children's. Just, you know, those are the themes of Rotary, and our club lives that in that way. And we wanted more books to go into the collection available to our patrons, you know, for that, for that benefit. We're getting lots of phone calls.
Tom, can you let, again, I'm sorry, Daniel is kind of stuck in no man.
I thought we put him in.
I know.
That is so weird, Deidra.
He's co-host now. Okay, sorry.
There you are, Daniel.
Oh, okay. He was in. Well, anyway, well, glad to have you back.
Here, I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one of our most popular programs has been our AARP Tax Assistance Program, which because of the COVID pandemic, the national AARP organization canceled nationwide. But we have this amazing group of volunteers who are now providing service in a remote fashion, where they have a phone number that our patrons can call, leave a message. The volunteers call them back and try to help them by having them scan tax documents then to, and send it to their email address. They, they prepare a return, make it available to our patrons, and then therefore, returns are filed at no extra charge. And I haven't talked to Tim Oberg, the coordinator, lately. But he said it was busy, and we're certainly getting lots of phone calls about this service. And we're referring them to the, the number and the group. And it's not the same as being able to drop in and get your taxes done, but at least it's, it's something for, for our residents. Let's see what else.
It sounds like it's working.
It is, you know, as much as, as much as it can, it is, it is working. And again, these volunteers, honestly, Deidra, day in, day out, they came two days a week, supposed to be here from 9:00 to 3:00. They would oftentimes stay past 5:00. And just a dedicated group of people, impressive. And something else that's very exciting to talk about, that I know, Deidra, you know a little bit about, and it relates to a $15,000 grant that was obtained by our county legislator, Catherine Parker. And it was in tandem with an organization called Cure, which is the Coalition for Understanding Racism Through Education. And the idea was that during this time of pandemic, wouldn't it be great to come together and do, and do a, not a one-city-one-read, but a five-town-one-book? And the towns that are included include our city of New Rochelle, Harrison, Larchmont, Rye, and Mamaroneck. And we were extremely lucky to, to capture, if you pardon the use of this word, a woman, an author, noted author named Isabel Wilkerson, who wrote. who wrote and, and, and published recently the book Cast, which is a book that's really remarkable, that really talks about the way, you know, people throughout America now and in history have been shaped by a hidden caste system that has sort of pegged people and put people in inferior positions. And so, and so we will be doing on April twenty-fifth, actually in our library, in our theater, Ms. Wilkerson will be presiding over a conversation about her book and topics. But prior to that, there'll be four sessions on April eighth, seventeenth, twenty-eighth and May third. Facilitated conversations about some of the most sort of telling chapters in the book. One, you know, being relating to how Nazi Germany went to the United States and looks at, looked at the Jim Crow system as an inspiration, quote unquote, to institute their ugly racial policies. Another session will be about India and its caste system. And there'll be others that relate to, you know, topics raised in Ms. Wilkerson's book. So we're going to be publicizing that. We're hoping that people will participate. And we would also like to provide for sponsorships, you know, not necessarily financial, but endorsements. So we're hoping to re-approach, and I'm hoping Daniel and Deidra and the rest of the board, we can approach My Brother's Keeper, approach New Roar, approach some other organizations that are interested in racial justice and equity. I'm going to approach our Rotary Club just to have sponsorship to publicize these, this program. And so-
The other thing, you're, you, you forgot to mention that yours truly is moderating the event.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I remember when you said to me, you asked me if I know anything about it. I said, well, I'm moderating. I don't really know what else they're doing.
Are, are you moderating the event with, with Isabel Wilkerson?
Yes, yes.
Wow, okay. I, you know, I, I didn't, I knew that you were involved, but I didn't, I guess I didn't recall that.
That's my involvement.
But you know what, Deidra, one thing that we need to, and not, this is not the time and the place, but if, if she's going to come to our theater, I would love to sit down with her representative and you and just work through how we're going to manage this. Cause we can use the Zoom, you know, webinar approach and, you know, allow for a hundred faces and over five hundred additional participants. So it's exciting.
And it's a great book, everybody. It, it's got something for everybody. So it's a really great book. I'm excited about the opportunity.
And it's, it's, it's received all sorts of awards and it's a bestseller on the Times. It's really, it's an important book for, for us, for us to consider. I'm almost done. I just want to highlight something that we've been doing that few organizations have been. When we, when the pandemic started, Red Cross and their blood drives were stymied. They couldn't find locations. But we decided to open our meeting room, a portion of our library. And we have had sessions, let's see, in March, in May, in July, August, one coming up in April. And so people can come in, people need to continue to donate blood. Our staff has stepped up, particularly our community relations folks and our custodians and our guards. There's been a hundred and five donations during this time period. And the Red Cross tells us potentially three hundred and fifteen lives saved. So I think that's worth sharing with everybody. And let's see what else. The foundation is having a, oh golly, a, I believe it's Thursday, a, another cocktails and conversation. And it really is more related to sort of self-help issues with two noted authors. So that might be something people are worth, would take some time to look at. The foundation also has its next board meeting this Monday. I believe it's at seven thirty via Zoom. And that's it. Thank you.
Tom, did that include kind of the current operational status? Yes, so.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah. So we're going to move to the personnel report.
Yep. I can make a quick, quick, very quick. We are still waiting for the upgrades to the positions approved for upgrade by our board, for outreach coordinator and our social media director. Civil services sitting on it is extremely frustrating. And it's been frustrating for a while. As you folks may know, that the city is anticipating a change in administration. The, it's proposed that the Civil Service Commission will be abolished. And the head of Human Resources for the city of New Rochelle will essentially take that responsibility. There was a meeting on, on Tuesday night about that. I don't know what happened. I wasn't able to attend, but I'm anxious to hear that. And I'm happy to report that we have second interviews for two candidates for the marketing and communications position. And that will happen the week of, of March twenty-second. And, and that's it.
Well, thank you very much. So we are going to go to committee reports. And is everybody familiar, has every, have all the board members, the voting board member? So Francis, I don't think you have an onboard account, but has everybody been onboard? Are you in the meeting today through onboard? Because the budget is in onboard. And so-
Yes.
If you're not there, I want to direct your attention to the onboard portal. And the first committee, we're going to do board committees is budget. And so I want to talk about the budget that we're proposing for this year or for the following, for, for our, for what we have as our calendar year. It's not the calendar, but for our budget year. And so we are proposing a budget. We have talked about for, for years now, we've talked about adding an assistant director for all of the reasons that Tom has talked about. We're very, we are a very active library, even when we're not, even when we're closed, we're very active. We have, I think it's the second largest, is that, we're the second hi- second highest in terms of the catalog? In terms of, yep. And so, and we also know that we are about to have, we're about to go into a strategic planning period and a period where we're going to be looking at our building. We've done our audit. And so we have a lot of needs and we have talked about an assistant director. And so we, the budget committee is, is really proposing a budget which includes the only addition to the budget from last year. So our budget is staying steady. We're including an addition for an assistant director and the cost of the assistant director. The only other cost included in this budget is for nondiscretionary things. And so that, your benefits, and actually Tom was good enough to send, that's your benefits and also there, the salary and benefits for the proposed director position. It constitutes an increase to personal costs as well as there's kind of no, the nondiscretionary increases is just fringe benefits. And that's fifty-nine thousand. Of course, that's your healthcare and stuff like that. And the increase in WLS fees, which we have no control over, which is fifty-five hundred. And so what that increase, what that increase actually means is a two point seven one in the tax levy over last year's zero increase budget. And if you remember last year, we, we had an increase that we were going to propose. But then COVID happened and we decided not to have an increase at all. Although I do think last year the district and the city went ahead with their increase. I'm not sure about the district. I'm almost sure they did, but we decided not to. So our budget this year, which the budget committee is proposing, is just has the, just has an increase for the assistant director, which we feel strongly about. We've talked about it as a board. And so we don't have to vote on it today. Do we have to vote on it today for timing, Tom? We do?
We, I think we do, Deidra, because once we do, we need to furnish it to the school district so they can sort of make it available.
And they need it like six weeks in advance. It's crazy.
Yeah, I know.
Crazy. So if everybody want, if anybody has any questions, but also the budget is available in onboard. If you go to, I don't know if you guys have found it, if anybody has questions, it's under the resources tab and it's under the proposed budget under, in the resources tab. So I'm happy to field any questions. Chuck and Whitney are available to field any questions as well.
No questions?
So I have no questions, but I just want to thank the budget committee for all of the work that went into preparing this. I know that it's a lot of decisions. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Can we do the thing, Tom? You know, I love to do this and I ask it every year. You know what I'm going to ask you?
I'm waiting.
Do you want me to ask you?
What does this mean for every person?
What does it mean? What does it look like? I think that hits home because I think a lot of these numbers are abstract in the grand scheme of things. The percentage increase is abstract. The total number increase is abstract. But when you break it down per taxpayer over the course of a year, it's really, I think, helpful for us to understand what that means.
You know, I have to apologize. Every year I've been able to obtain it. This year I haven't reached out to the city. I mean, I can do so tonight. And, and I will share it with you as soon as I get it, but I don't have that information, which is valuable.
Then in past years, it's usually been the, you know, in the thirteen to thirteen dollar range. It's a thirteen dollar increase in your library tax this year compared to last year, something in, along those lines, something where you can think of yourself buying a couple of, you know, a Starbucks coffee or two less. Oh, you know, and, and, you know, sacrifice in honor of your wonderful library. So.
If there are no questions, I would like to make a motion to accept the budget for the two thousand twenty, two, that, where are we? Two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year for the New Rochelle Public Library.
Second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Well, great. Well, it's passed and good luck. Tom, I'm excited for you to finally have a assistant director. All of our peer institutions have assistant directors and it's kind of odd that we don't. We had one years ago and it was cut because of budget cuts. And so I'm glad that we are able to do this again.
Thank you, board. I think it's really going to benefit a more efficient, successful library operation. So thank you.
Great. So we now will hear from Buildings and Grounds and the CROC Committee. And I think, Sarah, are you okay to do the report? We can hear you and everything.
Yes. So at our last meeting, we were waiting on one of the proposals. So we have in hand two just requests for information from, there was one firm who has done work at Garzdale Library in New Rochelle High School and another firm with very good experience as well. So we have those two project managers' reports. And then I had spoken to Whitney a little bit just in regards to special projects and the, the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, can, can you actually come back to me?
Yes. Sorry. You're doing great, Sarah. In the car with three kids.
Okay, so.
Sarah, do you, Sarah, do you want me to share what we talked about? Or do you want to do it?
Yes, that would be great. And then I'll go into more detail, but I just-
Okay, don't worry, don't worry. You're doing great. So yes, Sarah and I spoke, we talked, and I know that Sarah also spoke with Tom. But we, we spoke about kind of the order of operations and the project itself that we're looking at is, Sarah had told me a million dollars. And it's just a big project to do without a big picture as a driving force. So I don't want to say, I, I want you to give the details, Sarah, when you get a chance, but I don't know if we want to come back to her. Let's, I'll, we'll let her, I'd rather Sarah give the, the overview and I can fill in anything that I have to say, but.
Are you ready, Sarah? Should we go to community relations?
Sorry, if you could just go to community relations and come back to me after that. Sorry about that.
Yep, yep. So Daniel, you, you're on and, you know, take a couple of minutes here. Sarah needs it.
Sure. So community relations, hold on, let me pull it up right here. So there is going to be a Montefiore discussion on, as we talked about the vaccine earlier. The Montefiore's Dr. Madei Gonzalez will be providing a Spanish and a bilingual presentation to educate people on how the COVID nineteen vaccines work and the effect they have on the body. Details are in the attached flyer, which I, we can post on the website. And I will send this over to you, Tom. Please feel free to share. This is a, there's a big, there's a big concern about the education and the outreach as it relates to the black and brown community, not only in New Rochelle, Westchester, New York State and around the nation, about the education on the vaccine fears, which, which are legitimate concerns. And also the accessibility about vaccines. As we know, now things that start to open up, we want to know how and where to get information. As a community service provider, I can't tell you how many senior citizens of color have come to my center asking where can they get the vaccine? Because they just heard two or three days later that sickles was having a vaccine for sixty-five and older. And again, it's easier said than done to put things on social media, but sends any, an email. But when you're still on a flip phone status that doesn't receive emails or use a landline, which I have a lot of clients and people in the community that I know that do not have access to these type of, of accessibility of, of information. So that is the weak point of how do we really get information out there, the education behind it, the fear behind it. So that's something that's really important within our community of New Rochelle to be in the forefront. The second piece to that is, as many of you know, Congress has passed the new relief initiative that there's a big section in cards to housing and rental. There's, I'm sorry, rental assistance and utility assistance for families that are in need. There are several agencies, if you call two-one-one, when it comes to utility assistance and other services that are being provided, two-on-one is your gateway for a lot of community members that need additional information about what's going on, how to get services. And even legal advice, to be quite honest with you, I can't tell you how many, again, minorities or even the undocumented that are being scared with, I'm going to kick you out of the house, which we are on a pause. If you were affected due to COVID, due to COVID, I want to make that clear. Due to COVID, because sometimes we get individuals that are coming in here saying, I'm getting eviction notice back in January or December of twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. And uh-uh, that doesn't qualify because you didn't pay rent during that time. COVID did not exist. It existed in the world. But it, 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 there was no rules or regulations that prevented evictions or moratorium in that regard. So again, information is out there. I know the, the library Denise Link, I don't want, I don't want to get her name wrong, right, Tom? That's her name? Right? She, she has information. She's in a lot of coalitions and meetings from rights of counsel to eviction prevention. Or she can guide you to resources that are available. I share this information because it's something that's coming up that, that it- That, that it's still ongoing. People are unemployed, people choose to be unemployed. Um, and the difficulty situations that have happened within our community due to COVID. And that's it.
Thanks. It's like, back, is that, do you guys hear that?
Yeah.
But Sarah, are you ready?
Yes, sorry about that. I really apologize and thank you, Whitney and Deirdre, my fellow moms.
We get it.
So we have those two proposals. The, our last meeting, we had been waiting for one to come in. So the Buildings and Ground Committee reviewed those, both impressive qualifications and credentials. So the next logical step would be to conduct interviews and decide who we would want to hire for all of the improvements that need to be done on the building. But at the same time, after speaking with Whitney on the Special Projects Committee, we need to do a strategic plan. So it's, it feels like we should perhaps hold off on interviewing project managers. The one issue that we identified that we needed to move forward with was the HVAC system. But we're not sure, does it make sense to move ahead with that and hire a consultant just for that one project, when perhaps we need to look at the whole picture, even though that's what was identified as being the most critical? So I kind of want to get a feel on how the group feels about it. If anyone has any questions or any, so it was a million dollars, a million dollars for the HVAC. So it's, it's a big, a big number.
So how would we, um, um, how is, has the finance committee kind of thought about, been like, how are we going to?
I mean, the finance committee wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to pay for that, uh, based on the money we have. So that would require, we would have to raise debt to pay for, for that kind of a number. And we're like a couple hundred thousand dollars, that'd be one thing, but a million dollars, I don't, we're not, we don't have that.
Right. So the interesting thing was that from our building audit, that the estimated cost of the HVAC, the consulting and the replacement was around three hundred thousand dollars. So then when we got the proposal, it was significantly higher.
Why is that? Do we know why?
I think this is part of the challenge we have is that like, none of us have this expertise, just being very frank.
I think I discussed this at our last meeting. I told you guys, like, we, the number's going to be pretty big. And I knew it was because they, because I do have the expertise. I knew that, you know, when they give you a number, they're not going to know the real number until they do the work. And then when they do the work, then they find out, hey, this is the real number. So even if you get a great number that you like, when you start going into the details, someone actually takes on the role of actually doing the due diligence or crafting what needs to be done, that number can end up being three to four X, which is what we talked about in the last meeting on looking at what is going to take for us to get the building at least up to code, you know, in today's standards.
So I have a question. I feel like, I feel like this is an impossible conversation because it almost sounds like we need a project manager. Even though there's a strategic plan going on, we need to know these numbers anyway, like this, we need to know. So unless we're saying the strategic plan is going to be, and we are saying that, and so maybe the discussion becomes around the strategic plan too, but unless we say it's going to be done in, you know, three months, I, I just feel like I'm concerned about us putting out this, or kind of putting off this decision. That's my concern.
I mean, I think, sorry, the way that I have viewed it is part of what we're trying to understand is the bigger picture of the building. And the building audit is obviously one of the, you know, the most major component of that, but so is the community input and understanding on, uh, on the larger scale, what the community would like to see in a, you know, in their ideal library and how the building, um, either renovating the current building over time, piece by piece, or looking and thinking, you know, more holistically. And I say that because when we talk to the community and the community expresses, you know, the, the types of programming they'd like to see, the types of community events, how they would be more, you know, likely to use the library. And we, we come up against a very likely reality that our building can't accommodate everything that the community is asking for. That's when, that's when I'm, I'm going to be asking myself, well, does it make sense to spend a million dollars to replace a, a system of a building that isn't going to meet the needs of our community in the long term?
So if I get asked a question to Chuck, Chuck has the experience, you know, the longest experience. When you took on a million dollars and you had to figure that out, what would be the process of figuring out the, a million dollars?
That's just part of it, right? That's just one component.
Yeah, I know it's just one component. Wait, so this is a micro piece, right? So if we just said, oh, a million dollars and that's it, and obviously we know there'll be more behind that. But let's just say just the one million dollars. That's all we needed. What would be the process of that? Because then you got to think about, that's going to be, you know, five X, six X, seven X.
Every time we do a project.
Right. So just, if you just took that one million dollars, how would you approach that?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we would have to do, given that we don't have the money to do it, we would have to decide how much we think we need to finance of the million dollars, whether we want to cover some portion of it under of our fund, uh, you know, with the fund balance that we have. And then for the balance, we would go out using, I forget the name of the firm, Tom, Capital Markets Advisors, or whoever the firm is that we use to issue debt, and we would understand from them, you know, what we think the cost of the, of the debt would be. They would, they would, you know, look at the current rates in the capital markets and sort of tell us what it's going to cost to raise the money and, and, uh, and then we would go and we would go out to the, we would go out with a, uh, we would pass a resolution to issue a bond and we would have to go out to, to vote. We have to get a resolution, you have to get the, just like we get the budget passed, as my recollection is, we have to get the, the, um, you know, the, the voters to approve the resolution, uh, and then, then we raise the debt capital and we do the work. Is that, Tom, did I get that roughly right?
You did, Chuck. The only caveat is, um, once the board makes the decision, um, to, um, uh, request a, a bond proposition be placed on the ballot, um, in May, um, we need, and it's pro forma typically, um, approval from the Board of Education.
Yep.
Allow the, um, school district, uh, and ourselves to cooperate in obtaining, you know, the bond and working with capital markets, finding, um, a bond council that we use and, um, and then, you know, you know, what we did the other two times when we floated bond requests is we need to put together a, a convincing story, an, an argument, you know, why this is, uh, crucial and why we're asking for additional, uh, tax dollars.
I mean, I guess this answers some of my question. I mean, obviously we're not going to do that this year. Um, the vote is in May and it's March. Um, and we don't have enough information. So maybe it is that we are holding for the strategic plan, which will tell us or help us and guide us in this obvious question is, what are we going to do? Because we can't go, like, I can't even imagine the first time going out for a million dollars, but we're going to continue to have stuff. Go ahead, Chuck.
I might, I might suggest that we still may want to proceed with the project manager discussion because I think here's what we want to avoid. Like, there's a, the, the scenario that none of us want is like, two months from now, three months from now, that air handler fails and we like have a problem, right? This, and this is, you know, I earned, I earned these gray hairs from these meetings uh, and these discussions. And some of, some of you, I think, were here when we had the whole discussion about the, you know, the air conditioning and having to potentially have temporary cooling hooked up to the side of the building. And so I think the, I think, you know, as a, as a board, we don't want a scenario like that. And so that's where like, I think, I think part of the role of the project manager is to help us pressure test, okay, you, you say we need a new air handler or air handlers. Are they like imminent failure potentially, like tomorrow? Are they like, should have already failed? Or are they like, you know, you really need to replace them because they're going to fail at some point, but, you know, you probably got a few more miles left on them. And, uh, I don't know. Like, again, this is not, I'm like way out of my comfort zone because I'm not a commercial real estate. Uh, it's not something I do, but, um, to me, like, that's the piece that, you know, we're, you know, we, we, that, 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 that worries me.
But that part of it is a million dollars. Sorry.
So I do just also want to add that the proposal that I'm speaking about, it takes into account five to six air handlers. So in the event that one of them would fail, it would be, you know, a fraction of this cost that we're talking about. Just to kind of throw that out there, that we would be able to fix that. Obviously, we don't want to get to that point, but that they obviously, I mean, I, you know.
And just as a, um, an FYI, two of the air handlers were, um, replaced when we did the theater HVAC project. And according to Jean Eng, who, who spent a lot of time looking at the entire picture, he said of the remaining ones, the one in the, in the lower level, the basement is by far in the worst condition. It's in dreadful shape. The other ones are in different states of disrepair and he seemed to think some could be kind of like reconditioned, um, as opposed to an outright replacement. Um, so it would be pretty, as Chuck said, when we faced that issue some years ago, it was, uh, not the air handlers, it was the chiller that was ready to fail. And we were racing against time to get it, um, uh, replaced. And, and we, we made it. We did replace it and there was, and so no discomfort to anybody that summer. Thank goodness.
So what's the question on the table, Sarah?
So do we want, I feel like there are two lines of thought. Are we waiting for the strategic plan? Which I want to see how the group feels about that. Do we want to wait? Or do we want to go ahead with, uh, interviewing project managers? This HVAC proposal though, I'm looking at it separately from those project managers because this is just for the HVAC. So we were kind of thinking, should we replace this without hiring a project manager to oversee everything? Or do we want to hire the project manager? And then this would be under that same umbrella and they would handle the consulting for this project and all of the bids.
So that's how I understood it. But again, I'm not, I'm, I'm almost like Chuck, I'm out of my lane here. That's how I understood it, that we were going to have a project manager who would, this would be under, th- this project would be under that project manager as well as all the other kind of projects having to do with our building. Is that right?
I think that would be the most prudent approach, to be honest, because I think this gentleman, Jean Eng, who's done the work seems great. And I think, uh, you know, it sounds like, Tom, he's giving an honest assessment of like, if you really had to replace one thing, you would do this, which I like, as opposed to saying you need to do everything tomorrow. But I do think, um, it would be probably helpful to inject somebody with a, that doesn't have a, uh, you know, uh, that, that's sort of independent because they're not going to sell your products where Jean is obviously going to, you know, wants to sell us HVAC equipment.
So if we only had to.
I was going to say, Dan and Beth, I haven't heard from you guys at all. Do you want to weigh in?
Yes, I would, I would go with the project management to do, to focus on the project for this, this particular project, to focus on the project, but also to focus on everything else. I mean, they'll help us, number one, stay on budget. Uh, will allow us to, to look at what vendors are appropriated with, within their spectrum and put bids out there that are suitable to our spending and, and the work that needs to be done. So I, again, I'm not an expert in that. I worked with project managers before and I, let me tell you, as, as experienced, it's a weight off, off any director's shoulder to trying to figure out, trying to stay in budget and negotiate and whatever. Project managers, especially in this construction field and realm, they'll get the job done and make sure, and will fight for every aspect and penny to make sure with true justification and why, if anything, needs to be spent over what, what we budgeted.
Uh, Daniel said what I was thinking, but better than I would say it. Yeah, I think it, you're welcome. Um, I think that, uh, so is this going to be, um, like, do we put out, is it called like an RFP for a project manager? And how do we find, now?
So it sounds like we have one, right, Sarah? It sounds like we have two that we're interviewing.
Yes. So I guess the next step then, if we're not going to wait for the strategic plan, we'll just move ahead with this, then we'll start interviewing project managers. And we do have a couple of proposals. So the next step would just be if Tom could start scheduling interviews?
So that the cost is not a million dollars. I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying, like, what we're embarking upon is not a million dollar prospect. That's if we were to do the whole HVAC system or all the air handler, right?
Right. So that would be, that would just fall under the HVAC.
Aren't we having a project manager there to figure out what we need to get done?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know if we can make an assumption on what it's going to be until they give us insight.
Got it. So the first thing we'd do is get the project manager in to look through the things that we're thinking are the critical path elements that need to be repaired and then actually advise us and then oversee that work if we choose to do it.
Yep.
Right. I, I think a crucial piece would be once we bring that project manager in, as you all said, to, um, have the work done and, and, and basically put together the RFP for the replacement. And then, you know, the, um, proof is in the pudding. It's when the prices come back and we discover, you know, oh, this is a lot more than we thought, or, oh, you know, this is on target. When we did the, um, the feedback, Jean, Jean Eng, you know, put it out and we were surprised that the cost was higher than we thought. He sort of took a step back and rethought how, how to, how to do this. And he came up with a few solutions that ended up, um, bringing the budget, um, in with the money that we had. And a good project manager, you know, will, you know, uh, be able to think on their feet and, you know, um, if things are not the way we expect, to try to go to Plan B or Plan C.
Okay. So Sarah, do you, so Sarah, do you have your kind of, your direction now? Sarah?
Yes, and I will, um, upload those RFPs that we have so far, just so everyone can take a look.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sarah, will we have the two kind of project managers? Will we include, um, Jean Eng? Um, um, how about APS? Or will it be just the two?
Um, I think that it seems like Jean Eng is pretty specialized in HVAC and it sounds like we want a more general project manager. That could have a hand in HVAC and all of the other issues that we have to fix in the building. So I think that we want someone more general before we go that direction.
Sounds good.
Does that sound right, everybody? I mean, I understand Chuck's concern. We obviously don't want one of the air handlers to fail, but I think if we start speaking to project managers, we can probably assess that with them.
Yep. That makes sense.
Agreed.
Thanks, Sarah. I mean, this has been dragging on. Thanks so much. All right. Um, next is the Finance Committee. Uh, the chair is Corey. Do you have anything to share with us? You're muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, I thought Chuck was the chair, but I.
I was going to say.
Yeah, Chuck was the chair of the Finance Committee.
I was going to say, I was going to say, if I'm not the chair, I apologize for stepping on you.
It says on the agenda, and I don't know if I put this or Tom, Tom, either you or I switched it up. It could have been me, but it says Chair Corey Galloway.
Yes, I, I think it's.
I'm going to change it right now.
Might be old one.
Chair.
All good. No egos here. So we, the, the Finance Committee did meet, I guess, a couple of items and I'll let my fellow committee members obviously chime in as well. So, uh, one item was the, uh, you know, there was some reach out from Tom about some potential like expenses that were one-time items that we might want to try to cover out of the Finance Committee, uh, Budget, uh, sorry, the, the, the Fund Balance. And so we talked a little bit about that and, uh, basically just asked Tom to send us something kind of the, an itemization of the written request. We, we told him we were open to the things that we talked about. Um, and just to kind of put it, put it in specifics and that we would then, you know, likely meet and be fine with that. So that was, I think, kind of item, you know, item number one that we, that we talked about. And then the second item was the bank RFP. So we, you know, there was a desire to change banks that we use. And Corey had been kind enough to look at an RFP document that I think was maybe provided originally by the school district. And thankfully, Corey has a lot of experience in this space, you know, working with banks in a commercial setting. So he's, I think, we kind of brainstormed on some different banks to give the RFP to. And Corey kindly volunteered to kind of get the RFP out there.
Put it out to four different banks.
No, no, that's, and that was, those were kind of the items that we talked about.
Anything, does anybody on Finance have anything to add before I move on? Thanks, guys. Do you need anything from us? No?
Nope.
Personnel Committee, I'm not sure if I updated you last time. Personnel Committee met to talk about what our position is with the contract for the union. We are still waiting to meet with them. Do you have an update on a meeting, actually? Tom, any update?
Deirdre, when I last spoke to our union president, Rob Floren, he had indicated that the CSEA rep for our union, Yahira, her, her husband was a UN diplomat and was transferred to Rome. So she is no longer with CSEA, she went with him. And CSEA is in the process of appointing a, a replacement. And when Rob and I spoke last week, he said nothing yet. But I can, I can circle back to him tomorrow or early next week and just find out if someone's in place yet. But we're really waiting on that before we, the union does not want to go forward until they have someone from the home office, so to speak, to represent.
Totally understandable. I mean, we, just on our side, as you know, because you were at the meeting, we're ready, we're ready to rock and roll when they, when they're, when they're ready. Or we're ready to start negotiating is probably a better way to say it, when they're ready. So I don't, that's all I have for Personnel. Do you have anything for Policy, Whitney? Okay?
No, we don't, we haven't updated policies in a little while.
How about special, special projects? We do, right? I don't know who's chair, is it you, Corey?
We do. Corey is the technical chair.
I'm the chair, but we didn't get together. So you guys may have some info that I don't have, so go ahead.
I, I just have updates on the Memorial Highway Courtyard project, which I talked to you about, Corey, and I talked to Tom. And this is just related to the kind of forward progress. Last meeting, we, we voted on green lighting, Doug Emilio, for a preliminary kind of schematic design process as it pertains to the Memorial Highway Courtyard project, which is focused on ADA improvements and lighting improvements. So that is making use of the state grant money. And a meeting took place, I think, on February 25th. The foundation were present, everyone, I think, you know, was excited to move things forward. Doug went out to the, the courtyard and did a, you know, kind of a site review. He was out there for at least an hour with his colleague. And I met them there after they did their assessment. And, you know, just, we kind of talked about goals and ideas. They had a bunch of questions and it was, it was just great to see the process moving forward. So that was, that's exciting. So they said, I think, two weeks ago, he had said, like, four to six weeks for his first deliverable. So we're two weeks into that. So I think another two to four weeks, we will start to see something. And then I have another update related to the, to the strategic plan. But we can stay on the, this project if anyone has questions or things to add. Nope. Okay. No, okay, so this strategic planning process, as we all know, just to recap, we have been at this for a long time. We found Public Works Partners. They are working with us. Initially, they were working with us to conduct a community needs assessment. They will still be doing that, but they'll do it as part of a larger strategic plan, which we are, I don't know if obligated is the right word, but it's something that we, you know, we, we should do and do regularly as part of our New York State Library Charter. We need, you know, some kind of guiding, visioning, you know, process. So our last one expired, I think, just last year. So we're right on time with, with getting this process underway. So we basically just kind of expanded the scope initially. It was a community needs assessment. Now we're, we're looking at, at kind of a bigger picture process. So we, our committee reviewed the proposal they sent. We sent back comments. They are revising for the, hopefully, the third and last time, what will be the final scope for conducting the strategic planning process. And because it's, you know, it's something that we need to do, we're putting more money into it. And I've spoken with Tom several times to, you know, for, for comfort that this is something that we can pay for. And he said, absolutely. And the money that we'll be able to pay for will, will, we, I was assured this week that will result in a, a great and robust strategic planning process with all of the elements that we identified that had been missing and the kind of smaller scale version will now be included. So I think that's great. And it's, you know, I think everything our committee pointed out as missing from the proposal will, that will now be included. So we'll just wait to get that back. And in addition, we will, they will update the contract to reflect the new scope pricing.
So that's great, that's great. So now we are ready. If there's no other comments from anybody, Corey. Good.
I just wanted to circle back to the, the, the proposal from the library, from the library staff relative to the foundation grant request. And Chuck was the chair. He had, we had distributed to all board members. Chuck and I communicated today and, you know, not to put words in your mouth, Chuck, but you've indicated that, that, that there was a sense of the board to go forward and to bring it to the foundation's attention for the March, for the March meeting, for Monday's meeting.
Correct.
Are you going to that meeting, Chuck, or?
It's on my calendar, so I probably will, yes.
Which, sorry, which meeting is this? This is the next foundation meeting, great.
So do we need to do anything about that? No, he, if you remember, after the last meeting, colleagues, Tom sent us the foundation request. So I'm assuming if you guys had any thoughts, you, you sent them along the way. And if you didn't, Chuck looked at them and is fine with them. The one thing I would say, and I've said this to Tom and, and Chuck certainly knows, we've talked about this and Whitney, is I'd like to see the board a little more active in this whole process of requests from the foundation. I'd like to see the board actually have some ideas about, boy, it would be great if we did this. It would be great. And, you know, the foundation sits there as an arm for us to be able to do things for the library. And so while it's wonderful that the staff comes up with things, because obviously they're there, but it's also, we are elected to be and to think about what the library needs. So I'd really like the process to not just include the staff, but to include the board as well. So next year, it'd be great if, when Tom is putting together this list, he has some things that perhaps we've thought about in, in, in our years of discussion that the foundation could be helpful with. So that's just my little pitch. Chuck, do you want to say anything about that? Or you're unmuted, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, no, I mean, I think, you know, to be honest, the strategic planning process, I think, is a great, you know, I, I think maybe part of the issue is we don't always have the right forums to be thinking the big picture stuff. And I think the strategic planning process may lead to some, you know, good, good asks for the foundation.
Good, good, great.
Thank you.
Yep, so at this point, we are going to open it to public discuss.
I still have one update on the special projects side, which I discussed with you and Whitney. So Chuck and I did have a follow-on conversation with RXR. They were willing to give a grant, you know, that's a blind grant. We could do it with it, whatever we please. And obviously, no strings attached. But I just wanted to make sure I did talk to Tom about that as well. And so just on that conversation, they are looking to be great neighbors. And, you know, that is their, that's their position. Last conversation, whether they're willing to write a grant to us for $35,000. That'll be a blind grant, we could do whatever we want. It does, there's no direction towards those funds. And also, I didn't understand the strategic plan, is that in special projects or not? So if I get some clarity on that, that'd be great. You're unmuted.
You didn't understand strategic planning and special projects, say that again?
Is it in that committee or is it not?
Strategic planning, is it in special projects?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just not up to speed on that, so.
So we talked about.
We did it as a sidebar, so.
Okay. It's the same Public Works thing we've been talking about, Corey.
Okay, can you send me along, Whitney, what you, the last thing I have from Public Works is like December, I believe.
You have been on the emails, Corey, unless I've been sending it to the wrong one. But I, you've been responding also.
Okay, then that's me. Then that's me.
Hold on, Corey.
Looked at Public Works, I was actually looking up and I didn't see anything. So that's on me then.
So the 35, can I ask, so the 35, is Tom, you know what you're going to use it for or, or? Corey?
You know, I, I haven't given it thought. I would certainly like to have conversations with the board, with, with the staff. There are lots of things that could really make a difference. You know, maybe additional technology for, for our library that we need. You know, maybe something relating to loaning Wi-Fi units to our general population so they can have access to the library and to the internet. There are lots of possibilities, possibly using that money towards the Memorial Highway Courtyard project. That might be appropriate to invest in the building in, in that area where there's already grant money being used to, to make the building more accessible and safer, better lighting. I'm certainly open to ideas from the board, as well as chatting with the staff. There are a lot of possibilities.
I think lighting as part of that accessibility project would be really great. That would be my vote, yeah. I think that it's imminent, it's, it's tangible. It's something that would make a big impact on the, on the quality of the experience of them, you know, entering the library from that side.
Right, I agree. And, and it's not entirely certain that the monies that have been, that we've gathered would be enough to tangibly change and improve the lighting in that courtyard. So I'm with Whitney, I think we could add, make that project even more successful.
So would this be lighting at nighttime? I feel like that is such a dark area.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys all know I fell over there too.
No, that's, I mean, you can see why, we were joking, Al and I were joking.
I fell, I had, remember that, Tom?
I just found out you fell. We were joking before we knew you fell, but it was related to the, like, lifting of the plow when you're snow plowing, because they're like pavers. So it's like lift plow, it's terrible, Deirdre, I don't, I can, I can see how you fell, sadly.
I mean, I mean, that whole courtyard is such a missed opportunity. And to begin the process of making it easily accessible for people with disabilities to negotiate and making it, bringing lighting in so that it's safe to use in the evening hours when we're open and just keeping the building safe because there's not dark corners that people can kind of lurk.
That was one of the things we talked about. We were like, blue skying it for a minute when I met yesterday with Doug and his colleague, whose name I think might be Steve, does that ring a bell?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we were talking about beer gardens and kid puppet shows and movie nights and all sorts of things because it is a missed opportunity, but I think it can be phenomenal. So that's what we're trying to, you know, that's what we're trying to do here.
So.
And with that well, that was the original approach, that that well would be used as a programming space. It apparently never was a success. But it would be great to sort of repair the sins of the past and make it a place that's appealing. And it's funny, I had a meeting with the bid executive director, Carol Littman, who's fairly new. And she was very excited to hear that we were looking at the courtyard because she also feels that that's prime real estate and it's lost, a lost opportunity. And it would be great to, to make it more successful, make it, hopefully, if we could afford it, make it even look a little bit better too.
Yes.
And Daniel has his hand up.
Jeez, forgot what, okay. Oh, yes, the RXR grant. Two questions, RXR grant, yes, it would have to be something, something as you guys are talking about. I wouldn't look at anything like programmatic wise that is not sustainable because we have to think about down the line, how we sustain that type of program, even if it's Wi-Fi, how are we going to pay for it down the line and so forth. So I would think of something that's more transformative for our community rather than trying to think about, we'll do this project, so how are we going to sustain it? That's the first piece. And a second piece is, how are we right now with the Wi-Fi hotspots? Are we, are, do we still loan it to the school district? Is that, is that still a, a thing that we're doing?
Yes, Daniel, they, the, I believe there are over 40 Wi-Fi hotspots that have been loaned to the school district for families that do not have the wherewithal to afford, you know, internet access. But one of the things that we're actually working on, we've been in touch with Julie Converser, who is the city volunteer coordinator and is involved in the conversation and the process of dispersing monies that the city has obtained through, you know, through the, the first financial relief package.
CARES.
Great, CARES, thank you. And we're supposed to meet with her next week or the following week because we were looking at monies to try to, to try to enhance our ability to provide digital access to our community. So we may, that may be another road. And of course, with the, with the recent passage of the new CARES, there's going to be more money that's coming to the city. And I've been part of an email conversation with the city manager where apparently there will be more money and it might be made available for, you know, these issues of digital access, et cetera.
Great. Well, I'm glad it took almost a year to think about it. Digital divide.
Yeah, so we are now at the part of our meeting for public discussion. I don't seem to have hosting privileges and we do have somebody who has their hand up in, Marjorie has her hand up. So if you could.
Oh, it's, I think I can do it, hold on, hold on, allowed to talk.
Hello.
Hi, Marjorie.
So I'll, I'll be brief. I just want to say that I'm really taken with the, first of all, your collaboration and just the, the variety of expertise that you all bring as a board and as Tom, the director. So just really appreciative of that and that all you've done, you know, a year into COVID and keeping the library going and really impressed with the statistics, Tom, that you cited. I'm also very excited by this, by Isabel Wilkerson coming and cast. It's next on my, I'm, I'm in the midst of Resma Menneken's book, My Grandmother's Hands, and cast is the next on my list. And I, I can definitely spread the word about, about that, of those events. And if somebody could email me the different dates, I didn't have a chance to write them down. I don't know, Tom, if you could email me the dates, I can, I can spread the word about.
Put them on our, put them on the website so that.
They will, right.
Yeah, because then they could be spread far and wide.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to start our social media campaign. But Marjorie, I'd love to say, I can send you that information easily. And I'm also wondering if you could circle back to your organization and see if they would like to assume a role as a sponsor. assume a role as a sponsor for, for this, which would mean, you know, publicizing it. I'm just sort of looking at the, the listing of other organizations in the community that, you know, in the county, that is, that, that is assuming, you know, that sort of responsibility. And I'm paging through the document now. And I'm seeing things, you know, all over, Black Westchester, Ardsley Race, Urban Legacy, Indivisible New Rochelle, Westchester Human Rights Commission. I would love if New Rochelle, with its many diverse organizations dedicated towards, you know, racial equity, if we could get just the commitment to say, we, we approve of this and we sponsor it, it would be great to allow ourselves to, to make this program widely available in, in terms of people realizing that it's, it's there, it's gonna be, it's, there's no charge. Opportunity to have some difficult conversations about issues that are, that we're facing.
Yeah, if you could email me that information, Tom, I can, you know, speak to people in New Roar. And you know about Cure in Larchmont and Marinac, the Coalition for Understanding Racism in Education?
Marjorie, they're the ones that are putting it together, really.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Never mind, I just didn't hear you list that.
Is that Nicole?
Yeah, Nicole Alafonte.
Nicole Alafonte?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yeah, they're the ones that have started it with Catherine Parker.
If you can send it over.
Be involved, great.
If you can send it over, I'm the President of the Nerschel Council of Community Service. I, I can also publicize it, and we can definitely support it and sponsor it, and we, and we can talk offline about it.
Okay, and Black Lives, you know, Matter, you know, as, as well. Well, I'll send it to, to all the board members and also to Marjorie, as just the beginning to spread the word.
Okay. And then, and then just one last thing on a little more negative note, which is, as, as nice as it is for RXR to, you know, give a blind $35,000 grant, just, I'm always gonna caution you that they're trying to be good neighbors, but we don't really know that they are good neighbors, and we don't know what's down the pike. So I just don't want there to be any conflicts of interest, or just, just a caution on that, on that level. And that's it.
Thank you, Marjorie. It doesn't look like there's anybody else in.
If there's anyone else, just raise your hand at the bottom screen, bottom area. It says, raise hand if you're, if you're a first timer.
We have, there's two other people in the, you know, in the audience, Lucille Renwick and Bee Charm. And certainly those individuals are welcome to, to have their moment there on the floor if they'd like.
Doesn't look like they want to.
Nope.
So, going once, and twice, and last time, maybe next time they will speak, or maybe they just came to hear us, which would be great.
Can you imagine if the Board of Ed was like, anyone want to say anything? Anyone? Guys, hello?
Okay, well, great. As always, I enjoy spending time with you guys and talking library stuff, but I also know at 9:05, it's, it's probably time for us all to go. So I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The most, the motion passes, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Great night, everyone.
Work, Deandra, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night.